Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would ask that you stand for the pledge of allegiance to the American flag and remain standing for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Oh gracious God, we come as umlets, we know our Lord, we want to say thank you for being so good to each and every one of us. We come, oh Lord, not being selfish tonight, we praying for those who are less fortunate than we are, those who are bereaved, those who are fighting in harm's way. Lord, we pray for the leaders of the United States of America. We pray, Lord, that you will touch them, guide them, and give them decisions that are from you. Now, Lord, be with this body likewise, that we would do the things that you would have us to do, and you alone. Now be with all the city employees, be with the city as a whole, and direct us in every way. When we depart tonight, oh Lord, let us arise safely to our destination and find that all is well, and we will give you the glory and honor. In your name we pray. Amen. Hail and clerk, will you call the roll?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chambles.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Character traitor among his patience, accepting a difficult situation without giving a deadline to remove it, and we all need a little bit more of that. Have approval of amendments on public hearing, City Council meeting October first, 2013, to have a motion to approve those minutes. Do we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, pending discussion on those minutes. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and those minutes have been approved. At this time, we ask if we have any comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda, please come forward. Seeing now mayor, will you have a report?
Yes, sir. And I want to take, make it quick tonight, if that's okay with everybody up here. Well, counselors, we're open for business yesterday, and it was a very productive day. I want to say thank you for the holiday adjustment. Our Worldwide Day of Play event was a great success this past Saturday, we had roughly a hundred children turn out to participate. Thank you to our Parks and Recs Department and the U.S. Army Recruiting Station for all their efforts in showing the children a very actively, good time. We have plans to expand this event next year and just see it getting bigger and better. The annual Spinner's Pumpkin Patch Arts and Crafts Weekend is coming up on October twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh at Spinner's Park. Please check the city website for more information on that. Our annual Halloween Candy Walk will be held on October twenty-ninth from four to six p.m. Event starts at City Hall, lineup begins at three-thirty. We've had a stadium improvement committee have been pulled together, and their first meeting last week, was last week, and this committee is comprised of Parks and Recs Recreation Staff, committee members, and interested citizens, and should have more updates on that in very near future. On tonight's agenda, ordinance number one covers parades and special events. So I've moved around the river region, making contact with partners of Prattville throughout this whole area. Response has been very favorable on both the recent holiday change and this proposed ordinance change, and ask that you move forward on it tonight. Ordinance number two and three is surplus of city equipment and other items. As on a side note, we, working with city clerk Kathy Dickerson, the staff members are working on SOPs to help streamline this process of surpleasing equipment or certain items there, so please support it, and I do see some improvements in that type of activity in very near future. Resolution four pertains to our very successful self-funded healthcare program. Please approve this agreement, as it is very vital for us to keep our healthcare costs down. Resolution six and seven authorize a hiring of some budgeted positions. Counselors, I want to reassure you that we will use the utmost caution in filling these positions. Passage of these, passage of this resolution will definitely be looked at in a very conservative but proactive manner. Finally, you should all know by now that former council member Bobby Carter passed away yesterday morning. Bobby was former District One counselor and a family friend. The next time you have an opportunity to use the front doors of City Hall here, you might take a moment to look down at, down at the sidewalk. He was a part of that program, as council president Wood was also revitalization of downtown, and his name is in that stone, but Bobby made a significant contribution to that project, and his visits to City Hall will be sorely missed, and he has, he has definitely left a mark on the city of Prattville in a very positive way, just as some of his other family members. But, Mr. President, with that said, any questions, concerns, comments?
Does anyone have any comments, questions? Counselor Chambles.
Mayor, I heard a rumor, or I don't know what it is, but that there has been a temporary or acting or something, Public Works Director appointed for thirty days or something of that effect, what's going on with that?
Uh, nobody's been appointed on that. That position technically has not been, even though it is in the budget, which starts in January, it has not been duly assigned by the council, if that might be the proper terminology. But I do have Michael Whaley, who is on special assignment, like he's been with vehicle maintenance, sanitation, and he is overseeing some of the, the, what were the logistics of those five departments that have been discussed about in the, in the Public Works Plan.
All five of those departments?
Um, yes, which is some of the day-to-day logistics of it.
Has a secretary been hired?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That secretary has been hired, that was a, pretty much a lateral move from our police department. She was the, she was with the police department, and she, she is actually now positioned at vehicle maintenance, help out with the day-to-day activities for sanitation, waste, sanitation, wastewater, vehicle maintenance, urban management, and facilities maintenance.
Counsel Bowles.
Something just clicked in my ear, I have to ask. Okay, so we moved her from, secretary from the police department, and I was told this week that we had a position for a secretary in the police department, is that true, open for hire?
Yes, now I probably need to step back just a little bit on that. There was a position advertised for urban management, that it was, there was a secretary's position in urban management. It was, it was vacated by resignation, and then we had a temporary hire for that position, a seasonal hire, I guess would be the best word for it, okay? And then we advertised, that was a secretary two's position, I believe, and anyway, we advertised for secretary three with, with the mindset that she would, or he would, that position would help out with the day-to-day paperwork for those departments.
All right, maybe this is not the best form to talk about this, I'll talk to you later about it, thank you.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
This time we have a report on the status of city finance.
Place the report in front of you, it's the same packet we go over every month. The first sheet in that packet, as usual, is the revenue report. You will see most of those items, we are ninety-one point six-seven percent through the year, and if you will look, the total percentage of budget we have received, one-hundred-and-one percent of our budgeted amount so far this year, so we're at one-hundred-and-one percent with, on most of those items, another month of revenue to be counted for this, for the 2012, 2013 fiscal year. Next sheet you see will be the tax breakdown comparison for the month of September, showing you how each of those compares to the same month in the previous year. The next sheet we've got is the September expense report by department. Most all the departments are running eighty to ninety percent, there are a couple that are over that, and those are pretty easily explained, as it, like the finance department, we had legal fees that we had to pay that were, that pushed us over, as well as some sales tax audits that had to be done, that pushed us over, so most of those are very easily explained. Okay, the next sheet in the report is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement. You will see that year-to-date, the net revenue is negative two-eighty-four, two-seventy-seven, that's due to large capital purchases that were made, such as the property and several other pieces of equipment that were purchased, that we had built up a reserve to cover. Next sheet in the packet is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. Again, this, this income statement as well is negative one-thirty-two, eight-seventy-five, twenty-one, due to some capital purchases. One thing of note on both of these, there is a, another month of revenue that's going to go into this, so it's kind of a little lopsided at this point. The next sheet is the group health fund income statement for the month of September. You will notice, year-to-date, the group health fund has brought in seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars more than it spent, largely due to reduced claims costs and also the use of the care here claim. The next sheet is the bank balances for nine-thirty, twenty-eleven, twelve, and thirteen. You will see an increase from 2011, the balance for all city accounts was one million five-hundred-and-ten-thousand. Nine-thirty, twenty-thirteen, the balance was ten million seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand. You will notice on the general fund, the debt serv, uh, debt reserve fund, balance at nine-thirty, twenty-thirteen was three million three-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars, more than enough to cover the November payment that's coming up in a few weeks. The next sheet is the accounts payable and debt balances for nine-thirty, twenty-eleven, nine-thirty, twenty-twelve, and nine-thirty-one, nine-thirty, twenty-thirteen. You will see that nine-thirty, twenty-eleven, accounts payable and debt balances for the city was fifty-nine, fifty-nine million six-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand. Nine-thirty, twenty-thirteen, that number's down to fifty million one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Does any council member have any comments or questions for Mr. Mosley?
On account payable, are we making the big payment this month, or was it made last month? The, the three million dollar, don't we make a three million dollar payment this time of year?
The money is transferred out at the end of October. Essentially, we transfer it to another bank account that's in the city's name, but it's at Regent's because they're the trustees, and then on the first of November, they go in and pull that money out.
So, the only reason I'm asking, will it show, has it shown up on this one yet, or will it be the next one that we see that, that debt reduced?
It would be, it would be the November payment.
Okay, great, thanks.
It would, so it's two months from now.
Yeah, so in November, our debt will be less than fifty million, is what I was getting at.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Striplin.
Thank you. Mr. Mosley, just one quick question on any of the enterprise funds, note that we have revenue from services provided, grant revenue, and then if there are transfers, that's shown, but if we had made a loan via one of those entities, that's not necessarily reflected as incoming revenue on, on this sheet, but yet we're showing expenditures.
Are you referring to the, the money where the city put that money into the sanitation enterprise?
No, I was really thinking more of the land purchase on the wastewater side.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. No, that is not, that's a very valid point, yes.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other comments? I just want to make one statement, for the council's knowledge, Mr. Mosley and I spoke a few weeks ago, and we all are aware of uncertainties that are going on, and I asked him to keep us apprised of what may be happening, we don't know what's going to happen down the road, but we got a lot of stuff going on with people being out of work, furloughs and all of that, and for the sake of this council, if it looks like things are not going the way that they should, based on what our budget is, to get with us so we could possibly do some cost-cutting measures to stay where we're supposed to be.
And, and one note to add to that, Mr. Wood, we actually had a discussion with the department heads and told them, in light of, you know, we're at the beginning of our budget year, there's a lot of outside things that are happening, that we need to keep a very close eye on our expenditures, don't, if, if it's not absolutely necessary, hold off on it, and so we're keeping a very tight rein on, on everything until, especially until we can see how things play out.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
At, at the department head meetings, it's, it was just discussed that any expenditures outside of the normal day-to-day expenditures have to come through my office or through the finance department's office, so that way it's sort of a triple check and balance on there also, but we're very concerned, cautious about our, about the revenues coming in because of the, what's going on with the federal government, so, but we do have, we will definitely be keeping you guys informed, but that is one of the standing orders out there. If it's not normal day-to-day expenditures, they have to come through one of us first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley, mayor. At this time, we have a report from council on special committees, Counselor Striplin.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Chambles.
Yes, sir, we're going to have a public safety committee meeting next Thursday week, October the twenty-fourth at four p.m.
Counsel Bowles.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Boone.
Yes, sir.
With that, we will go into our agenda. The first item is an ordinance to amend city code, chapter fifty-four, article thirteen, parades, it was held from October the first. Counselor Boone.
Mr. President, I would like to put in the substitute ordinance for the ordinance that was read in two weeks ago at our meeting. I so move.
We have a substitute ordinance in place of the one that was held from October the first, 2013. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowles. In order for this substitute ordinance to be heard tonight, the rules must be suspended. We have a motion to suspend the rules. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising your right hand, and the rules have been suspended on a substitute ordinance. Been a discussion on this substitute ordinance. Counselor Boone.
Yes, sir, for the sake of the council, who may or may not have read the fine print, as well as the public, who may or may not be listening, I'd just like to say that the basic things that we changed were timing in order to allow for the comments that Mr. Semus brought us last meeting, and that is that we are going to change from thirty days to forty-five days as a request for the permit, which will allow us more time to get this permit thing wrapped up, and as well as allow the appeal process to happen at our next regularly scheduled council meeting, and hopefully therefore avoid any special called meetings. I would also like to very much thank Meredith Dismuks, who headed up this project and put a lot of work and effort into finding the groups and getting the hearsay from the public, and she really made this work, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Be in a further discussion on this substitute ordinance. All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand, and this ordinance is now adopted. Item number two is an ordinance to surplus various items from the police department. Counselor Chambles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the items listed in attachment A are hereby declared surplus of the police department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. Be it further ordained that the city council instructs the mayor to sell said items on govdeals.com, and that proceeds may be deposited in general fund. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. The rules must be suspended on this ordinance also, do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended on this ordinance, would be in a discussion on this ordinance. All in favor of the ordinance, signify by raising your right hand, and this ordinance is adopted. Item number three is an ordinance to surplus one vehicle and various equipment from the sanitation department. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the vehicle and equipment listed in attachment A is hereby declared surplus of the sanitation department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. Be it further ordained that the city council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle and equipment on govdeals.com, and that the proceeds be deposited into the sanitation enterprise fund. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion by Counselor Striplin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Rules will need to be suspended on this ordinance also, in order to be considered tonight, we have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Counselor Chambles, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, second by Counselor Boone. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. The rules have been suspended on this ordinance, would it be in a discussion on this ordinance? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and this ordinance is adopted. Item number four is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign a three-year lease, three-year lease agreement with Carla Bowles Properties for the Care Hill Center, at a cost not to exceed ten thousand eight hundred dollars per year. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas in resolution twenty-ten, page eighty-six, the city council of the city of Prattville authorized the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Carla Bowles Properties LLC for the Care Hill Center, and whereas the term of the initial lease shall expire on December thirty-first, 2013, and whereas the city of Prattville desires to continue to lease said property for the Care Hill Center, Care Hill Center at a cost not to exceed ten thousand eight hundred dollars per year, and whereas said rental costs will be paid from the group health fund, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Carla Bowles Properties LLC for the Care Hill Center for a three-year term, beginning January first, 2014, and ending December thirty-first, 2016. Be it further resolved that the rental costs associated with said lease are hereby authorized and appropriated to be paid from the group health fund. Be it further resolved that the mayor and any other necessary representatives of the city are hereby authorized and directed to execute or attest signatures required on any document reasonably necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. Mr. President, I so move.
Have a motion on the floor by Counselor Brown, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Being a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number five is a resolution to award bid number thirteen dash zero-zero-eight to Sansom Equipment for the purchase of two trash dump trailers for the sanitation department in the amount of forty-seven thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Counselor Striplin, will you read it?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville sanitation department has a need for trash dump trailers, and whereas forty-eight bids were left for the sanitation department for said trash dump trailers, and whereas two sealed bids were received from Samson Equipment was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars per trailer, and whereas said dump trailers are a budgeted expense for the sanitation department. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby awards bid number thirteen dash zero-zero-eight in the amount of forty-seven thousand nine hundred and ten dollars to Sansom Equipment for two trash dump trailers, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen line item sanitation enterprise fund capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Chambles, for being a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and this resolution passes. Item number six is a resolution to authorize the hiring of five full-time and one part-time heavy equipment operators to fill previously non-filled or newly budgeted positions in the sanitation department, at an annual cost not to exceed two-hundred-and-eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars for salaries and benefits. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville sanitation department has a need to hire five full-time and one part-time heavy equipment operator, and whereas the city council has adopted a resolution requiring council authorization to fill previously non-filled or newly budgeted positions, and whereas the annual cost per full-time employee will not exceed thirty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars for salary and benefits, and whereas the annual cost for the part-time employee will not exceed fourteen thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars for salary, workers' compensation, and FICA, and whereas these are budgeted positions in the sanitation department. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that up to two-hundred-and-eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring five full-time and one part-time heavy equipment operators, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen budget line items, sanitation enterprise fund, salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the human resources department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Counselor Striplin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown, will be in a discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and this resolution passes. Item number seven is a resolution to authorize the hiring of one IT specialist, two to fill the previously non-filled or newly budgeted position in the information technology department at an annual cost not to exceed fifty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars for salary and benefit. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville information technology department has a need to hire one IT specialist, two, and whereas the city council has adopted a resolution requiring city council authorization to fill previous non-filled or newly budgeted positions, and whereas the annual cost of such employee will not exceed fifty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars for salary and benefits, and whereas this budgeted posi, position in the information technology department, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that up to fifty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars is hereby authorized to be expended for purp, uh, for the purpose of hiring one IT specialist, two, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the FY two thousand and thirteen budget line item, information technology department, and salary and wages, warmest comp, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville, that the human resource department is authorized to implore the hiring process as budget, I so move.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Boone. Be in a discussion on this item? Counselor Bowles.
Yes, sir, I was made aware this week that, turns out, we have two other entities in Prattville looking to hire IT specialist. That would be the Tyler County School Board and the church, I go there, I just, center point, thank you. Both of them are looking at hiring somebody, but their salary and wages are a little over eighty thousand, so I'm not sure if we're going to be a little low on this. I'm asked Doug to try his best to meet it, but we might have to revisit this salary if we can't hire somebody that fits our position at that amount of money, because it just worded me a little bit that they're at eighty and we're at sixty, looking for the same people. So we'll see what we get, and then we, we might have to come back and revisit this in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bowles, be in a further discussion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This item passes. That exhausts our agenda for tonight. At this time, we have any comments, or any persons as present on any other item, please come forward at this time. Please come forward at this time. If not, our next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November fifth at six P.M. here in the Council Chambers. We will need to go into executive session this afternoon. For the sake and good name and character of an individual, we have a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of going into executive session signify by raising your right hand. We will retire. One nay. Madam Clerk, second rec. One nay. We will retire to executive session approximately within the hour. We should be back to close out.
Mr. President, could I ask the reason for the executive session? I've not been advised of that. Do we have a letter from our attorney stating that this executive session is proper?
I have been requested to prepare one, yes.
Okay. What is the reason for the executive session?
As I just stated, to discuss the good name and character of an individual.
If that's not the case, I will leave that meeting and return to the council chambers. I also have a motion that I would like to bring from the floor after the executive session. We were assured in the budget process that the public works director position was not going to be moved on until the council had full time to discuss and deliberate and debate and vote. Based on what I've heard tonight, I don't, I think that that's not been kept. So I will make a motion after our executive session to rescind the public works portion of the currently adopted budget.
Are we free to go into executive session now, Mr. McDowell? We will retire for executive session. Any other business that we have to carry on along with the amendment for the floor, if there's something else to take up, we'll take it.
What I always say when we do this.
I'll try that again. You can stay if you want to, but you don't have to.
I want to sit fresh. I want to sit for a parade.
I thought you wanted us to come.
Oh, well, I don't know. Let's do it.
He said he knows inside right.
I don't know.
Where did he go?
It's two blocks short.
They're coming from Washington, not to New York.
So said, oh, true.
Where'd we clean later before they go?
Yeah.
They go away to the store.
They keep putting in the hour.
I'm working on it.
I should go to the garage.
I want to sit fresh.
I want to sit for a parade.
I want to sit for a parade.
I thought you wanted us to come.
This one.
I don't know.
Let's do it.
He said he knows inside right.
I don't know.
Where did he go?
It's two blocks short.
They're coming from Washington, not to New York.
So said, oh, true.
Where'd we clean later before they go?
Yeah.
They go away to the store.
They keep putting in the hour.
I'm working on it.
I should go to the garage.
I want to sit fresh.
I want to sit for a parade.
I thought you wanted us to come.
This one.
I don't know.
Let's do it.
The question I need to ask is, if I go send a message, if I don't draw a polygon, it goes to everyone in the area, right?
Do I have to draw one?
You have to select all the entire area or pick up all of them.
I may have to bug you all to get rid of this in the first one.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I was going to do it this afternoon.
Just the counter.
No, let me hold on.
We just went live.
Anyway, we sent a message.
Yeah.
So, yes.
You can't even listen outside the door anymore.
They moved, don't you?
All I could hear is, if I could hear laughter, I could hear raised voices.
What I could do is I could walk down the sidewalk and look in and they were smiling.
Creeping.
I'm a reporter.
Go get it one way or another.
Some of the other charities.
Oh, no.
Don't let you get that.
No, 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 no.
We just did one and.
It's completely without any of the risks.
And then as things calm down this week, I'm trying to do the video thing.
I think I can do it just on video.
And figure out how long it can be and all of that.
I'll figure that out.
And just get it right and see if we can get something shorter to point that we can.
Well, some of the people that Google a couple things and then they're the expert.
Oh, yeah.
She was cracking out.
Oh, yeah.
I just love, I just love these people that Google a couple things and then they're the expert.
Oh, yeah.
She was cracking out.
I just love, I just love these people that Google a couple things and then they're the expert.
Oh, yeah.
Generally speaking, people don't take the time to say, yeah, exactly.
Always, it's very good of people who come to praise because they've taken the money
to be that they can have it.
And this was, this was my, I mean, most of the concern was they didn't get the message.
And then we had one that, you know, he's a known smarter than me.
He just, he's way sarcastic.
But he was lying.
It makes, it makes.
We got, we got.
We got it.
And so we can think of it like this, and then it's like this way, like, if you got all of the alerts wherever you were, you'd be so inundated that you wouldn't know which ones applied to where. So to get them as you move into that area is more logical. So, he didn't come up and say anything else. So he must have decided, oh, okay.
I got it.
Yeah, I'm ready. I think this is the very.
And see, the woman that said something about the board of ed system, you know, I explained to her that's a subscription. You've got to give me your address.
Mr. McDowell, we are ready to come back. Do I need to get a motion or can I just declare that we are back out of?
You just declared.
I declare it there. Executive session portion is over. We are back into our regular meeting. At this time, would there be any further being, Mr. Hamer, at this regular call council meeting? Counselor Chambers?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to bring a motion from the floor. I make a motion from the floor to rescind the public works portion of the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen budget.
We have a motion from the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second because it was brought from the floor. Rules will need to be suspended in order for it to be considered tonight. We have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hand. opposed? Rules have not been suspended and this will not come before us tonight. Do we have any other business?
I believe, yes, sir. I request that we either have some kind of work session or some kind of meeting for us to, to work out the differences as far as it concerns the public works.
Okay. Take that on the advisement. Will we have any other discussion from any other council member? Counselor Bowles?
Yes, sir. It has been brought to my attention that we have someone working as a special, I don't know the exact word you have it, but they are working for thirty days and after thirty-one days, under our rules, their salaries will be adjusted for that spot and it is not in budget. So I would ask the mayor to make sure that does stop at thirty days and don't go to the thirty-one days, please.
Would you like to address that, Mayor?
Yes, sir, if I might. Thank you.
Please.
I don't know exactly where you got your information from, but I assure you, you're incorrect.
Will it stop after thirty days?
I have had various special assignments and I have a short list. I've had somebody move from vehicle maintenance to urban management. I've had somebody move from webmaster into my office. I've had somebody move from urban management to parking wrecks. I've had somebody move from police department to executive. I've had somebody move from fire department to executive. I've had somebody move from PCA to judicial. I've had somebody move from fire department to facility maintenance. I've had somebody move, basically I had the whole facility maintenance move to, to the fire department. I've also had the fire department move to vehicle maintenance, sanitation, facility maintenance, sanitation, and wastewater. That has happened over the last approximately three years. Now, the, there was, as mentioned earlier, the, a secretary position was, was mentioned and out of the five departments that we have talked about, the vehicle maintenance, the urban management, and sanitation department, as I know it, have had secretaries in those roles. I'm not aware of one in facility maintenance, nor am I aware of one in wastewater, but I do, I will stand and be, I appreciate anybody to correct me if I am wrong here. But, so there has been a lot of special assignments done throughout the whole city over the last few years and my belief is that without those special assignments, the City of Prattville would not have been able to accomplish the task, the core services, provide the core services that a municipality is supposed to provide. So without those special assignments, and so many of these people have not had a pay adjustment at that point in time. So there's, there's a lot of, lot of positive history with these, with these special assignments. One particular individual has sat in multiple committee meetings with practically almost everybody up here from various times giving reports. So anyway, I think the special assignments, I think the special reports have been very beneficial to this municipality.
Since we opened this can of worms, so you're assuring me after thirty-one days the pay does not change?
I sure would like for it to.
But it does not change?
I'm not aware of it changing.
I want that in writing, that that does, the pay does not change until we vote on it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the approved budget, that position did not go into effect until January.
And it doesn't have enough money in the budget to cover what's in this, what you gave us here? It has been brought to my attention that we have someone working as a special, I don't know the exact word you have it, but they are working for thirty days, and after thirty-one days, under our rules, their salaries will be adjusted for that spot, and it is not in budget. So I would ask the mayor to make sure that does stop at thirty days and don't go to the thirty-one days, please.
Would you like to address that, Mayor?
Yes, sir, if I might, thank you.
Please.
Um, I don't know exactly where you got your information from, but I assure you, you're incorrect.
Will it stop after thirty days?
I have had various special assignments, and I have a short list. I've had somebody move from vehicle maintenance to urban management. I've had somebody move from webmaster into my office. I've had somebody move from urban management to parking wrecks. I've had somebody move from police department to executive. I've had somebody move from fire department to executive. I've had somebody move from PCA to judicial. I've had somebody move from fire department to facility maintenance. I've had somebody move, basically, I had the whole facility maintenance move to, to the fire department. I've also had the fire department move to vehicle maintenance, sanitation, facility maintenance, sanitation, and wastewater. That has happened over the last approximately three years. Now, the, there was, as mentioned earlier, the, a secretary position was, was mentioned, and out of the five departments that we have talked about, the vehicle maintenance, the urban management, and sanitation department, as I know it, have had secretaries in those roles. I'm not aware of one in facility maintenance, nor am I aware of one in wastewater, but I do, I will stand and be. I appreciate anybody to correct me if I am wrong here. But, so there has been a lot of special assignments done throughout the whole city over the last few years, and my belief is that without those special assignments, the City of Prattville would not have been able to accomplish the task, the core services, provide the core services that a municipality is supposed to provide. So without those special assignments, and so many of these people have not had a pay adjustment at that point in time. So there's, there's a lot of, lot of positive history with these, with these special assignments. One particular individual has sat in multiple committee meetings with practically almost everybody up here from various times, giving reports. So anyway, I think the special assignments, I think the special reports have been very beneficial to this municipality.
Since we opened this can of worms, so you're assuring me after thirty-one days the pay does not change?
I sure would like for it to.
But it does not change?
I'm not aware of it changing.
I want that in writing, that that does, the pay does not change until we vote on it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the approved budget, that position did not go into effect until January.
And it doesn't have enough money in the budget to cover what's in this, what you gave us here. What's in your budget doesn't cover what you gave us in here. That's my concern.
Until January.
But it's only fifty-seven thousand in the budget, and in here it's seventy-something. So it's my concern that we're not correct on our budget that we voted on versus what's in this, this pamphlet you gave us. You put in every department eleven thousand five hundred dollars for somebody to run that department, to oversee those five departments. That comes up to fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and here we got seventy-four thousand. Where's the rest of the money?
I guess you're going to share that a little bit more to me. I mean, we've got a secretary who, to do the clerical work and, and the payroll and stuff along that line in those various departments.
And then, and then you brought up, the, the other can of worms you just brought up was the secretary again that tweaked my ear. Now, we voted as a board that no new position would be filled. This is not a previous position that I'm aware of that was in the city, and you simply slid one person over and then trying to hire somebody else to take her position.
No, sir.
That's not what happened.
If you go back and look at the minutes and everything else, you'll see that it was done just as appropriately as it should have.
So we voted on that position?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you have to excuse me. I would like to see that, because I don't remember voting on that.
I believe the city clerk can get that for you tomorrow.
Can you get that?
We'll have it in the mailbox. Now, that position was opened up, correct me if you can, I think to the public, or was it internal? Well, basically, we open up positions one of two ways, either internal hires or we open it up to the vast public, where you be internal or, or not. And this was a position that was opened up internally? Anyway, either way, it was internal or worldwide. And now that position was, was approved by this council for it to be, to be hired, and it has been hired. It was a lateral move from the police chief's office, and that person has assumed that role. Now, right now, there is nobody in the, there's nobody in the police, police department in that role. Now, that, that position has also been approved to be hired on, and if I'm not mistaken, Chief, is it Monday? He's not in here. Monday, they're, they're starting the interview process, and I think that they have approximately twelve to fifteen people interviewing for that.
So what happens if the council decides to squish this whole thing? What happens to her?
Well, I guess, if you pull the budget back and take these positions out, there'd be a lot of inefficiency in the, in the police department, if that's the one you're talking about. Now, if you're talking about.
No, I'm talking about the Public Works. If we decide to pull this Public Works and take that position back, because also we don't have a Public Works Director and she has nobody to work for, what happens to her?
Uh, I don't know. It's part of the day-to-day activities, and I'll definitely improvise like I have over the last three years or so. I think the various departments are running a lot more efficient than they have. I'll probably ask somebody else to, I'll ask somebody to be on special, special assignment to, to get us through this, like I have this short list of, of positions here that I've talked about.
And like I said, I do apologize because it caught me off guard. I was not expecting any of this to happen until the first of the year. And since we've moved the secretary over, it sort of seems like we forced our hand, and we haven't, we're, we're getting very close to where we can't make a decision.
Well, I totally disagree with you on that. I mean, because you have, I mean, I guess where I'm a little bit bewildered is that this is, it's been sort of a common MO that has had to been done, in my opinion, to get us to the point that we are right now. As I mentioned, I have not really put any names beside these positions, but I know that in some shape, form, or fashion, you know the vast majority of the people that I have discussed about in these roles right here. Now, the efficiency of the various departments has improved. Now, there's still a great deal of, of efficiency that needs to be done there. I have also asked one gentleman to be an interim position at this point in time, and that was not even on my list here.
I just think the whole thing leaves a bad taste in my mouth from the last four years.
Councilor Boles and Mayor, and you all are having a real, real good constructive conversation. That's what government is all about. But for the sake of us not getting bogged down with this tonight, I would ask that you all cut your conversation. Now, I'm calling a work session for Monday, ten, twenty-one, thirteen at four P.M. to discuss certain aspects of the budget, any items that you all have that you would like to discuss, have them ready, and bring them with you. That'll be Monday at four P.M. And if, Kathy, if you are, I guess we can do it in here, or be fine.
Madam Clerk, I, I don't recall since the budget was adopted that we voted to fill the Secretary of the Public Works Director's position. If that's the case, would you send me that, the minutes and that resolution where we did that?
We filled the urban management secretary position and voted on the secretary to the secretary.
But we have not voted on a Public Works Secretary.
No. Yeah. For, for the record, I like to reiterate what you said was that Kathy Dixon, the city clerk, said was that it was urban management secretary position that was voted on, and that's exactly what I was relating, relating to.
And again, I'm going to state for the sake of time and for everyone having the opportunity to go back and review their budget and call and get whatever resolutions that they need to get from Kathy, to go back and do that and figure out what questions and comments in all aspects about the budget, Public Works, or whatever item that you want to discuss on Monday at ten, twenty-one, thirteen at four P.M. here in the council chambers. Okay? Thank you. With that being said, this concludes our council meeting for the night. Thank you for, I've already stated that our next council meeting is Tuesday, November fifth, six P.M. We look forward to seeing you. Again, let me reiterate that the work session is ten, twenty-one, and thirteen. Whatever aspects you need to discuss, I would suggest that you write them down, and let's come together and get them discussed, get them cleared up, and let's move forward and handle the City of Prattville business. With that being said, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Our meeting is adjourned.